Hi, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Coats, Eric, Counselor Strata.
Here.
Counselor Shann.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Sturts.
Here.
Counselor Frye.
Here.
All members are present, we have a quorum.
We need the approval of the prior meeting's minutes.
So moved.
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Strata. Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Strata.
Yes.
Counselor Coats.
Yes.
Counselor Shann.
Yes.
Counselor Sturts. Counselor Frye. IBAs one abstain, motion carries.
Thank you. Names of individuals wishing to address counsel, we do have one that would like Eric Dominic to come forward reasoning not on the minutes here or on the agendas because he didn't give us an agenda that he wanted to talk about, he just wanted to speak to counsel. So we'll grant him a few minutes of discussion, so Eric come forward. State your name, please.
Eric Dominic. Okay, the reason I'm coming to counsel is probably threefold. Number one, I would like to address the parking on the street between, on Clinton, between Elm and Depot. The street just does not like to have parking on that street. Ikey Street has no parking on either side and it's bigger than that street. Plus, there's a parking on there. So I feel that parking should be respected on both sides of Clinton Street between Elm and Depot. Number one. Number two, had I known back when that parking lot was being considered to be built, that I would have junk construction vehicles parked across the street from my house, I would have fought a tooth and nail to keep that parking lot from being built. I'm requesting the city council to look into the possibility of moving the overnight parking over to the Depot side where it isn't going to affect property values because it's only a park or parking across from that area.
You're saying that there are construction vehicles parked there overnight, is that what you're saying?
They're not good-looking construction vehicles. They belong to a downtown business. Now, the real reason I'm here is to talk about the downtown buildings. I don't know if you know it, but I own both 137 Clinton Street and 133 Clinton Street, which is my house right beside me. The night that this occurred, this murder occurred, my grandchildren were sleeping in the front room of that house. Had Bullock gone astray, who knows what would have happened. My problem now is it's become personal because I rent that place to my son and my grandchildren live there and now they're going to move. So I'm losing a renter because of this murder and because of all the fights and the yelling at night that goes on up there. And it's not acceptable to me. I'm going maybe even to lose financially and then I'm going to have a rough time renting a house out to somebody that the house is across from a murder scene. That is the reasoning I'm here and I'm asking the city council to look into this matter.
Have you called police when you've heard?
We have, we have in the past, but I doubt we will now. We have as much right to peace and quiet as anybody else in this town. And having three bars in a one-block area does not be too peaceful. I would like the city council to look into it. That's all I have.
Eric, are you willing to come to a couple of meetings to discuss when we set these out?
Sure.
So maybe you could call and get this going so that maybe you can call for the police chief and so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, so thank you very much for your time. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, Eric. Moving on, new police officer.
Come on up, Jim. Don't be bad.
Okay, now get your back to the camera. I don't know where you want to stand, purpose aside. He can move, the camera cannot. You come in front of me. Are you good? I'm gonna read this and I'm gonna get you. Raise your right hand. I state.
I, John Borchard.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Wausau.
The Charter of the City of Wausau.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of the patrol officer.
Of the patrol officer.
Wausau Police Department.
Wausau Police Department.
For the City of Wausau.
For the City of Wausau.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
Hey, John, I'm gonna have you come sign this, by the way. That way we're the officer. And we'll be filling the shoes of Kenny Blankenschir. Today we had our retirement party for and he had a very good turnout. How many years, chief?
Twenty-five.
Okay, let's move on to committee reports, building and ground.
Director Mark. I wish David Director was here because he has presented a package of information. He would like to get something going with downtown revitalization and socials, trash cans and garbage and things like that. I personally didn't want to be the one to bring the first one to the podium. But is it a few other Martin or talking to include?
There's a few of the items that we could take a look at, but ones that we have are the most expensive, so on the high end we're looking about a thousand dollars. There'd be black, a grease called thermal plastic that's gonna be on top of the metal, but the thermal plastic should keep it from overheating. The ones that we have in the pictures are about a thousand dollars. There are a few online that are about seven hundred, but it just depends on whether you could come through them exactly. I think there are a couple different options. I'm gonna probably get Lennis County to call because they have medical ones in their area. I'll find out who they buy theirs from and how much they pay for it, which gives us a ballpark idea of.
Same material?
Same material.
Yeah, right in the minutes that they were at the high end of the price range. I had one picture of the benches.
But they don't say the exact main brand of the benches, so it's just, it just says construction material. That's the company itself that's been in it.
Okay, so we don't know.
We had talked about that, the time reservation kind of alongside.
Has any of that been set up yet? When do you guys meet?
Uh, we meet actually tomorrow. Like when?
Soon, I think, to set up the timing.
Yeah, because we've gotta go through all of the people that have applied for the downtown revitalization grant, I think it's three that we're gonna do.
Okay, good. Moving on to charter revision commission.
Yes, our committee met again for the second time on May 12th and we've come up with four, four different proposed changes for ultimately council's approval and if approved then to go on to the ballot in November. The first one would, would affect our code section 302(c) and it specifies that someone running for the council must be a registered elector of the municipality and a resident and resided in the municipality for at least one year. So we cleaned up the fact that the elector has to be of the municipality, which was what we've called it together, and so we added the residents for one year to run for election or to be appointed to the vacancy. And then in regards to that, on section C, we have put in a provision that if a member of council is not qualified at the time of filing for office or ceases to possess any of those qualifications, i.e. a resident or an elector, it would be, the position would be immediately vacated and forfeited upon a majority of both of the remaining council members. By majority vote, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that would be a three-two vote? In this particular case, would be a majority vote?
Yeah, it would be a majority vote of the remaining members of the council.
Okay.
That's the one whose qualifications is an issue, right?
Right, so if you had five members voting, three-two vote?
Yes.
And by adding that provision here, what we then do later on in the fourth proposal is to remove, we remove that part of the disqualification of a member from the existing provision where the mayor needs to bring the charges, we have a hearing, and then we have to vote at phase four. That provision still exists, but there's only two reasons for it now instead of three, but we have taken this qualification out of that section and added this. So those are two of the changes, even though it accomplishes one goal. Another one of the changes had to do with our president of council sitting in and being the acting mayor in the mayor's absence. And the president of council would still do that, provided however, that at no time shall the acting mayor vote a second time on any matter in order to break the tie vote. So that's what we were trying to eliminate there was the possibility of the acting mayor voting as a member of council and having a three-time and having a second vote themselves to break the tie. So that has been inserted. The fourth and final item is just something that was still in our code that had to do with when the director of finance was elected. There was a provision in the code that alluded to primaries and if there were more than two people running for the director of finance, it would be a primary. So if the director of finance is now appointed, not elected, this once again is trying to give you that terminology in place and still playing. So those are the four, four recommendations that the revision committee commission came up with.
Just to point out, John, since I see the ordinances, the draft ordinances are attached to the materials, provided by council, a 215-6, which deals with the ability to vote twice, I had a typo in there and it says twice action mayor and it shouldn't say acting mayor. That'll be fixed when it comes up for, assuming you guys approve it, when we have it up for legislation next time, it'll be revised. I think there was another.
I think it was the word elimination, Tom, in one of the headings.
Yeah.
And these were the working tasks, the whole show there at times. We've run over those at times. At least corrected by the time it comes into legislation form. So right now, we're just, our recommendation is that we're asking that these four recommendations be accepted and then they will come forth as legislation.
Yeah, and I think it's okay to do it all in one unless if there's one or more that, you know, one or more council members have issues with, we can separate it out as you guys desire.
The recommendation Margaret explained to me had to be made before.
Two birds, that's.
And this is the recommendation, it's not the final legislation.
Right, right, right.
So if we accept this tonight, we have not had that.
Good.
I'd make a motion that we accept the four recommendations from the charter review commission.
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Sturts. Is there any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Sturts.
Yes.
Counselor Frye.
Yes.
Counselor Shann.
Yes.
Counselor Strata.
Yes.
Counselor Coats.
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
Park board.
Park board member on May 12th spoke about a soccer kick wall. Citizen from the community approached the park board about the idea of installing a soccer kick wall at Biddle Park. Park board received it very well, just gonna work out some project specifications before final approval from the park board, so they're waiting here back and Dave Murray on some specs. The yellow and green recycling containers have been installed at Biddle Park. Park board member Bill Drummer asked about the four diamonds at the north end of Biddle Park, if they're gonna be ready to go. Dave said the city workers and robbery members are working to get those ready for opening day. Bill Drummer indicated that WRA releasing funds for the purchase of eight bleachers. I assume those would be used at the north end as well. The robbery club is showing an interest in refurbishing the restrooms at Rear Park as one of their projects. And that was everything they covered.
Is that Rear or Rotary Park?
Rear. A kick wall is something that soccer players, it's either exactly the dimension of the goal or a little bit bigger and kids just kick the ball off. The town to the west, Archville has one.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to tree commission.
Tree commission up, May 13th. Didn't have really a whole lot of anything other than just general discussion, a lot of different curriculums. One thing in particular, Jim speaks, it's not really related to the tree commission, but seems like we were trying to find something for downtown flowering boroughs, trying to find somebody that, he was gonna check PSFA and see if there's a man who runs the garden club that might be there. Other than that, there's not really a whole lot of.
I did check with Dave on a couple of these questions that Jim had. Katie Black from the Ag Department is planning on doing those pots down there. He has said that he has funding for that, to take care of that, it's just a matter of getting that put in place. The one thing that they would like to be across is possibly using local, you know, greenhouses in the town here to be able to, most of the plants, pots and stuff, so that we wouldn't ask. There's a couple of other questions in here that I thought maybe Dave could go to the next meeting, if maybe to talk with them, answer some of these questions. I asked if they'd call and he said he had a topic that Dennis, the same thing, so in communication with him, so that we can get his answers that they have before he comes over.
What's on, what's your number?
Yeah, in fact, I think the last one they have is from Katie Black.
Correct. We're kinda waiting on her to kind of call.
So I don't think there was any action on this either. Okay, department heads. Chief Luther?
Yeah, you might have seen a couple days ago, the fire department caught fire on Sunday and currently on a reserve fire engine on loan to the department. For purposes of getting a backup for the entire department, this is what we did for several weeks until they were able to gather up their equipment and get that taken care of. Also fireworks, just to make sure everybody's aware, the July 3rd date this year, Friday evening, so on July 4th and then to fundraise the efforts this next several weeks, we'll see if those start to increase from that date.
A couple things we have going on, May 22nd, this Friday, we have one of our officers in a car out at the Wausau Primary School for their career, spurred a day that they have up there. Fire department will be there as well. May 25th is the Memorial Day Parade, that's at 9:30. And Safety City will start June 1st, the first round. Right now, we have 51 students already enrolled and we have 26% of the donations needed to complete that or in. And Karen has just sent out the first round of donation money, so we're well ahead of where we were this time of year.
Well, Mother Nature's been doing a good job of keeping us busy with grass futter. We've had to mow a third of the futter, 60% out, we're gonna have to mow and put on taxes, so we've done another six out today, so it's. So people would remember our ordinance, when it gets to a certain height, like six inches, that it can be mowed and if not, we have to do it, it's fifty dollars an hour and it goes under taxes, so.
There's a place right here, I was coming, the meeting at North Park, right across from North Park, this stuff is super tall. I didn't know.
The tallest was a property on Lindford, Mark measured it, it was 24 inches in the backyard.
That's it.
The biggest thing I think with mowing too, because there's so much mowing, is to try to keep it out of the streets and our stores.
Yes, that's, that's the other thing, is when you do mow it, especially now that it's so long, blow onto the yard, not out into the street where it causes problems. Dennis can address that, but I know it gets into our sewers and can cause traffic issues too, especially if it rains with that slay in there, so.
A good illustration of that was evident this morning, as I drove around town, into town and so on. Maple seeds, the helicopters, if you will, and lots of other vegetative debris piled up all around the catch basins, where the catch basins were taking all the water they could, and that stuff just kinda floats above it and collects there and swirls and then settles down. So the street sweep will catch that tomorrow morning and there are a great deal of it, but it's a good illustration of what Tom was just talking about. Okay, updates, water reclamation plant, the digested lid replacement project. Pre-construction meeting has occurred since the last time council met and construction has begun. The two welders are on site as of this morning, assembling the new lid. On the, also the water reclamation plant, the screw pump replacement project, Peterson Construction, the successful bidder on that, has issued an offer for a $4,000 plus some change deduction if we allow them to use a different type of gate replacement valve than what we were called for. And between the engineers and superintendent of pipe, we are going through that proposal and evaluating its worth. The hot store storm sewer replacement rerouting is installed and in service and we continue to work with hot store on abandonment of the old line. Public Works guys are still doing some hydrant flushing. Started that last week and continuing to do this week until they get all the way it does. Since council last met, Tom Paul and I met with Clinton Township about sidewalk, running a sidewalk out Elm Street towards 840 West Elm, and we have technically settled on running that sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street. Long story short, the township trustees will contact their residents, inform them of that and make sure that we don't have any hidden things that would prevent us from doing that. I'm going to refer over pipeline easement and the pace project to the law director. But also legislatively tonight, there's emergency legislation for Mouser Warner Engineering Firm. This is an emergency so that it can get into place and so on and so forth for the Lindford Street project. This firm specializes in geotech services, soil compaction, soils analysis, soils testing for any kind of contaminants. Also materials testing, they will take a batch of asphalt when the papers show up right over trucks and test it to make sure it's a specification of cement concrete. They'll take cylinders of concrete and test them for their makeup as well as their strength and so on, just to make sure that they're meeting specifications, both our specifications and ODOTs. So we want to get that into effect so that that doesn't hold up our contractor from starting. Speaking of that, we have received state clearance to proceed with awarding bid for the Lindford Street project. And Megan, myself, I've started that, sent the notice of award to Vernon Nagel Incorporated that was calling it, it was a lot better. So we'll start that contract dance and hopefully get through that sooner than later. A whole series of things will happen after that, including the contract dance, but especially there will be a pre-construction meeting, they will propose schedules, submit shop drawings, materials they intend to use, all which has to meet our approval and ODOT's approval. Once we settle on a schedule, a target schedule, it's our intent to have another open house type meeting with the affected residents, where they'll be able to let us all know of any medical deliveries and things like that that we all need to be cognizant of and try to ensure that happens. Obviously, the business cycle's in trying to keep thorough doors open and as unaffected as possible. Anyway, we'll have that meeting prior to construction as well. Chute Avenue power deriation project, Lee Wilson, has delivered three base power to the site. Okie Electric is beginning to go ahead to set our meter pole and feed to what will be the new console, the co-council. And we are in the process of awarding bid to Wise Electric from Archville to perform the rest of that project. Also of note, I saw Lee Wilson on site today on Ledwood Street installing the feed loop to the new subdivision, so. Other than that, have you been doing it, Eric? Other than that, have been doing it directly.[1279.82][1279.82](laughing)
Very good. Thank you, Dennis. Anything else? This was Mr. Dennis. There's a lot.
I deferred two things to him.
Yeah, okay, Jamie?
I won't be a fun business. I'd like to call your attention to new business. I have a motion to, it's basically to amend to the budget to have after the bleachers to be installed at the north of All Diamonds. Aaron did give me a quote today, and it's going to be a little more than $5,000. It's going to cost us about $5,700 if we can make that change in the motion to allow that.
That's in addition to the Rotary dedicated dollars to make the bleachers whole for the back block.
And that's still out of Aaron's capital?
Yeah, yeah, he has that fund available.
Money you did not otherwise spend, that was budgeted.
So that's all I have tonight.
The $5,700.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tom?
So Rover Pipeline, three things. It is finished, before you, and I think we may, Dennis and I, Mr. Farmer came up to finish our discussions last week, I think, and we shut the door, Dennis and I looked him straight in the eye and said, "We need a couple more dollars for the season," and I think he's going to capitulate, so we'll see. He promised us an extra, maybe I shouldn't even, should wait until the deal is done before we...
Probably should.
We'll let you know how that concludes. So it's not finished, I guess. But anyway, the legislation's before you tonight, and we were just haggling over some technical details with respect to access to the easement or notice if they ever want to come back and, you know, rework the area so the city would know and be a part of that, so it was not anything of great consequence. And then with respect to the PACE program and legislation, so as you will recall, that's, I won't go back over all details of what that's about, I think you guys have heard that enough, but procedurally, what has to happen is the RUP enterprise needs to provide a petition to council, create the district, provide with that petition an initial plan of what they're going to use the funds for and where the district would be, and also provide copies of articles of incorporation, which would be filed by the RUP folks after council would approve it. They have submitted, so we're working through, the economic folks are sort of, I think, spearheading it along with the Board Authority people, and I have reviewed, there had been a petition that was provided to us to give to council to consider, but I looked at that and I thought there were a few things that needed to be included that weren't included, and so I've reached out to, Dennis and I've reached out to Matt and the folks at Board Authority. I think we're going to have a conference call probably next week sometime, just to get that taken care of. So, long story short, hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have a, yeah, fully prepared petition that the council can review and consider and get this thing up and running. Just to remind you, this will entail the creation of a nonprofit board, I think the mayor will have to sit on it, the council can appoint one person, and I think the other three people would be appointed by, in this case, the RUP folks. So it'll be an actually ongoing nonprofit corporation, will have to meet once a year, there'll have to be, you know, regulations for the company, which is not a big deal, but we'll have to treat it like a living, grieving nonprofit corporation. And it's my understanding that Matt's office is going to sort of take the lead on keeping that up and running and making sure the meetings are held and that sort of thing, and then I'll, you know, we'll assist just to make sure that this is properly managed.
Focus participating?
Yeah, right. As a player, we want to make sure that it's, you know, consistent with what the statutes require. That's it.
Great, thank you. Let's move on to legislation. First reading, Resolution 2015-15, authorizing the mayor to grant a permanent and temporary easement to Rover Pipeline LLC for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a gas pipeline across the rails to Trail Spike Pass.
First reading.
Sorry?
Motion moved by Consular Coats and second by Consular Frye. Is there any discussion? Consular Coats?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Consular Strata?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturz?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, Resolution 2015-15 passes on first reading.
Could I just interject? And I really didn't mean what I said about holding Mr. Farmer hostage and shutting the doors and trying to extract additional funds. The issue came up during a very collegial conversation, and I don't want you guys to think that we were trying to restore home weight in the city, yeah.
There are reasons behind your questions.
So the issue came up, we discussed it, and that's whatever. And I just feel bad that I described it that fast.
Yeah, that's right.
We're all friends of Mr. Farmer and Rover in the city, so...
All right, thank you, Tom. Resolution 2015-15, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Mouser Warner for materials and compacting testing services for the Lindfoot Street reconstruction project and declaring an emergency.
Why move that we suspend the rules and declare an emergency on Resolution 2015-16?
Second. Motion moved by Consular Shamp and second by Consular Coats. Is there any discussion? Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Coats?
Yes.
Consular Strata?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Sturz?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Motion moved by Consular Chamberlain and second by Consular Frye. Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Consular Sturz?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Strata?
Yes.
Consular Coats?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, Resolution 2015-16 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Thank you. Okay, we have nothing under second and/or third reading, so we're going to move on to new business, and we have the agenda in front of us. The following motion is necessary to amend the budget within the capital projects and from tax fund. The amount necessary is $5,700 for purchase of bleachers.
So move.
Motion moved by Consular Shamp and second by Consular Sturz. Is there any discussion? Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Sturz?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Strata?
Yes.
Consular Coats?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
Anything else under the business from council? Make a motion to approve the bills?
So move.
Motion moved by Consular Chamberlain and second by Consular Frye. Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Consular Sturz?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Strata?
Yes.
Consular Coats?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
I'd like to move council into executive session for potential litigation. There will be no actual...
Make a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation. I'll second that.
Motion moved by Consular Chamberlain and second by Consular Shamp to enter into executive session. Consular Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consular Shamp?
Yes.
Consular Strata?
Yes.
Consular Coats?
Yes.
Consular Sturz?
Yes.
Consular Frye?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for coming on my day to check in.